Well, good evening, everybody, and welcome to tonight's committee of the whole meeting on the December 4, 2023. This meeting is a meeting of the Board of Education held in public for the purpose of conducting the school distance business. It is not to be considered a community meeting. There is a time for comments by members of the public during the meeting as indicated in the agenda. Members of the public wishing to address the board on any of the topics included on tonight's agenda, may do so by signing up on the public comment signup sheet entered prior to this meeting. Board requests refraining from making any comments involving personally identifiable information about students, staff, or administration. Comments should be respectful, focused on the items being considered by the board, and will be restricted. Time to open up the open session agenda. First thing is comments by members of the public, and are there any? Next up is the report of.
Steve, do your roll call.
All right. Roll call, please.
Iya Smith.
Here.
Nick Olson.
Here.
Mick Schumacher.
Here.
Brooke Taylor.
Here.
I'm here.
Chris Allison.
Here.
First update is reported.
All right, I have a handful of informational items. I'm gonna start with Principal Haroldson and his board update regarding Great Lakes. I know, all right.
Good. All right, I'm glad to be here tonight. I just want to give you some general updates for Great Lakes, I'm hoping. Um, celebrations, I guess I want to highlight two things, continuing to raise student achievement every year. I'm gonna show you a little bit of data, and we're well above the state averages in math and reading overall, and also some above the state averages in some key subgroups. Another celebration, I continue to be the luckiest principal on the face of the earth. I work with a staff that works really hard. I trust them. If I was a quarterback, I'd feel comfortable trusting them to catch every ball I throw. And the whatever it takes mentality, this is the foundation for any of the success that we've had the past few years. Talked about achievement being one of our important data points. Like pulled our achievement score on the school report card, and it actually, it goes off of the last three years. And I believe the school report cards the last three years are somewhat comparable. I know they've done some different formulas. I think we're kind of on the same ground here. What this is, is it takes math and reading, and it takes your past three years of each of these, and it calculates a score. You can see their overall achievement is going up for math and reading, something we're really proud of, something we've really emphasized a lot in our building. I guess I'm just talking to like everyone at staff meeting, I'd like to see Great Lakes be the highest achieving school in the state of Wisconsin. And we continue to make progress toward that, and according to this, we're about the 65th percentile in the state of Wisconsin. So we still have a little bit of ground left to cover, but we're gonna keep working to try to do that. Why is achievement so important to me? Because we, this is forward testing, state testing information, and we test probably 180 to over 200 kids, depending on the year with our enrollment fluctuations. So every half percentage point, this goes up means we have another kid in a statistical category where they've got all of life's great doors open to them. Just want you to look at overall, so I took the state averages, which now this is all public, and we could do some comparing. You can see we're overall, we're above the state average by about 14 points. Some group, we spent a lot of time really focused on at our building, making sure these kids, students who are in the low socioeconomic status range, we're up to 46% proficient advanced, double what the state average is. And then disability, we've seen some really awesome growth. This is English Language Arts. Thirty-four percent of our students with a disability are at proficient or advanced compared to the state at 14%. Another point I want to highlight here, if we took our low socioeconomically disadvantaged students, we're still seven points above the overall state average, and that state average involves all the students. So I'm really just proud of my teachers and my support staff and my counselors and my kitchen staff and everybody that plays a part in getting this data where it needs to go. Similar pattern on the math. We had a math goal for several years, and we finally have broken through getting well above the state average. You can see that's the overall socioeconomically disadvantaged students, again, were almost 50% of those kids are getting to proficient or advanced. And to get to proficient or advanced means they're all scoring individually about 60 to 65% of the students in the state. That's really hard. Again, we're seeing the same pattern with our kids that have disabilities. I pulled this, I guess, I think this combines everything, including speech. I pulled it from the Wise Dash state data. I mean, I could further break this down to, and again, we are students who are low socioeconomically disadvantaged. That group alone is also higher than the overall state average. So just really prideful with that. Challenges I want to talk about, I know as a board you've heard this again and again and again. In fact, I was just listening to Mr. Kaelin, I think, last board meeting, one of the ones that involved the boundaries. Mental health continues to be a challenge. I think it just needs to continue to be communicated that we have next to no resources outside of our counselors at our school. And I would also say too, like, I know Mr. Kaelin talked a little bit about this, but I've had a school that's fluctuated between oh, 350 kids now, all the way up to like 460 kids. I've done it with one counselor, I've done it with two counselors. Having two counselors is a game changer, and I think we have to make tough decisions. I want to keep this in mind. I think this also has helped with our data resurgence the past three or four years. The one resource we do have, when it's in place, is a great resource, Superior Community Health. I've had a couple awesome therapists there. But over the last two years, I can count probably on one hand the number of months they've been there because they leave for different positions. We have, we had our current person, we had working with a full day, a full case load worth of kids. We're ready to add a second day, so we had a witness ready. She took a different position. There's nobody there. So I just think it needs to be mentioned that these counselors are handling our day-to-day needs of all the kids. In our situation, the students who don't have homes, regular organization of food bags, calling and connecting with community resources, organization of all the paperwork required in Educlimer. They've got 30-plus social academic groups. They are key when we have higher behavioral needs, ends are emotionally, social emotional needs and sped to stepping in and helping. They're regularly out at recess supporting those kids. And really, I think if we don't value this piece, we're gonna throw a lot back on the teachers. And I'm fearful that some of our data success won't be quite as easy to achieve. School goals. We did, I showed the data for math and reading. The past several years, we've been focused heavily on the math. I've gotten math to the point where we have tabled that, not that math isn't a priority. But we had about a 24% gain in proficiency over the time that we started that math goal, I think in like 2018 on our continuous improvement plan. We are now straight up focused on reading. You can see up there about 69% of our kids met the 40th percentile on the decodable words in the A reading, which is part of our FastBridge testing suite. We want to get 90% of the kids at the 40th or higher by the end of the work, end of the school year, on either the winter, the spring, or both. So the forward data, the state testing data I showed you there, that's one piece of testing data. This is, I would say, a more useful piece of testing data because we get this information in fall, winter, and spring. And if we can get that up to 90%, I'm pretty confident our state testing data will also keep moving in the right direction. We also have a climate goal, 100% of our students and families will feel they belong in our school. That came out of some of the survey data that was collected at the district level. Where we thought maybe we need to connect a little bit better with some families. I don't really know which families had some of that feedback, and it's an anonymous survey, but there was enough of it that we wanted to focus on that. As far as action steps for reading, maximization of the systems we built, our PLC teams, our RTI teams, systematic phonics in the core, core instruction K through three that aligns to what the science says about decoding. We've also put a lot of effort this school year into vocabulary instruction and getting kids, I guess, simplifying the writing process and really focusing in on the sentence level and eventually the paragraph level, so those kids can write clear and coherent paragraphs. If they can do that one thing, I am thrilled. The climate goal, we've used our staff meetings regularly, at least on a monthly basis, to go through our discipline referral data and also our savers data, which is more of the social emotional academic piece, to make sure we're intervening with kids that need our support. We put emphasis on every staff member having a positive communication with parents of all the students they work with at the beginning of the year. And then the truancy piece, we had some conversations about just keeping positive and exercising patience with those kids who are truant because it's usually not the students' fault that they're truant. It might be frustrating when they're gone three days in a week. But just trying to maintain that positivity for those kids and these students. All right, sorry, a lot of information. Questions, what questions do you have?
Five here, five there.
Do you know, what is your truancy percentage?
Truancy percentage last year, and I'm gonna defer a little to Kate, but we had like 25 to 30% by grade level that missed the 10 or more days that are allowed by state statute. I don't know what that percentage is right now. Actually, it seems that it's better only because I'm not having a lot of meetings yet. Last year, that time of year, we sent the letters, the kind of the gentle reminder, and then it's time to, you know, to sit down and talk and meet. But I've only had a small handful of them. I tell you what, I probably have an answer for you tomorrow. I think it's on the system. I didn't, I don't look at the percentages. Yeah.
It sounds like it's a little bit lower for Great Lakes.
Yeah, right now, I mean, yeah, than last year. We had a fifth grade that had a fairly high percentage of fairly significant truancy, even to the level we had to go to the county and such things.
Right, has he developed the action items for reading? Are they somewhat aligned with or relatable to some of the new items that'll be coming up with Act 20?
Yeah, they should be aligned to the piece of that 20, and in fact, we've been, we've been doing some professional development on that, probably going back to the start of the EMLSS position with some of the trains we did there. So like, we, we kind of knew this was coming. I didn't expect it this fast, but it should be aligned to the science and some of the requirements that'll be coming to you with the state. And the state law isn't all bad. Some of it's gonna be frustrating and maybe a little bit of extra busy work, but I think the emphasis they put on the science and how kids learn to read is gonna be really a great thing for us as a state. Thank you. Thank you very much.
All right, I have two other informational items, and they're not here, so we'll table those for next week. Okay?
Yep.
My first action item is the calendar for the 24-25 school year. So I'd like to give some background. Do you want to ask for a motion first, or do you want me to talk through that?
No.
Okay.
So we would motion to approve one of these options.
Why don't I give some background? And then, does that sound okay? Can I do that? And then you can motion on the recommendation. Okay. So I want to give you a little bit of background on how the calendar options came to you tonight. This actually started last school year. At the conclusion of the school year, I always get lots of different conflicting information about how snow days are going, virtual snow days, those kinds of things. And so last year, at the end of the school year, we pushed out a survey. Parents filled out the survey and staff filled out the survey. And I have the results of that survey from last year. And the question we ask is, you know, is this plan for providing virtual snow days been a good option as opposed, instead of having to add days at the end of the school year and extending the school year? The, I see. Of the parents that filled out the survey, 83% said yes. And of the staff that filled out the survey, 93 said yes, that they're preferring that we keep this virtual option instead of extending the school year. We actually received tons of really good, positive feedback about the virtual. I was just expecting as many positive responses, just because it tends to be somewhat of a divisive issue, but a lot of positive. And then we were asked for some feedback on how we can make those things better, and we met as a Department of Teaching and Learning this summer to really look at our plan, and we made some adjustments, adjustments particularly in the secondary level to add some additional teacher time for students. So we made some adjustments based on the feedback there. So we kept that plan moving forward. Additionally, when, about five years ago, we tried to have a calendar committee come together. One of the things I learned pretty quickly with a calendar committee, well, first of all, one of the things, I've been doing school calendars for over 20 years in any role I've been in district administration, and one of the things I've learned is you don't make everybody happy with the school calendar. So we tried a calendar committee about five years ago. What I learned really quickly in that process is the six or 10 people that come to the committee have their kind of personal preferences emphasized, and it's not necessarily representative of all the staff. So then we started pushing out surveys, and then as part of listening sessions that we had this year and from last year as well. I decided before we even started drafting a calendar this year, I would do an overall survey and just kind of do a reset. Like, what do you, what do you think is going well? What are your opinions of different aspects of the calendar? That's just, I have it up there. So some of the things that staff had said when I sent out the survey this fall was that they prefer that we have half workdays in August as opposed to full workdays, that they prefer the Tuesday through Thursday for staff development days as opposed to like Monday through Wednesday or Wednesday and Friday. So they have those Monday and Fridays off. They prefer having a professional development day earlier in the year so they can work on their SLOs and look at their school improvement plans. We also survey staff at the conclusion of our professional development days, and that kind of helps guide the decisions we make and where they get placed. The feedback was very clear that the week of March 10th is when people want spring break. And I asked the question about whether we wanted to start before September 1st. More and more school districts across the state of Wisconsin are asking for waivers to start the school year before September 1st. And so I asked the option of staff, is this something we're interested in? Hands down, no, they're not interested in that. So all of those, all that feedback was really helpful, and we drafted that calendar based on that feedback. The one area that was not clear was how long we should have winter break. The staff are very divided. 45% want a shorter break so that the school year ends earlier, 44% wanted a longer break, and 11% prefer. So, so I drafted two calendars that kind of showed longer break and shorter break, and that's the same results. So I wanted just to share with you kind of what staff had said with these two options that we put together. 64% of staff prefer having a longer break over a shorter break. Did I do that right? No, hang on a second. Sorry, I said that wrong. 55, 55% of staff prefer to have a longer break and get out later in June. And 45% prefer to have a shorter break. So the results are relatively divided again. However, there's a couple of points that I want to bring. I want to have this discussion at the school board level for transparency purposes, so people know how decisions are, how the decision comes to be. There's a couple of issues. One is I feel like we should lean towards what staff have asked, and that the majority of staff have said, can we have a longer break and get out later? But there's two challenges with that option. One at the high school is when we do that, we have more days without seniors at the high school level because they will graduate on that previous Friday. So that gives them four days without seniors as opposed to three, I think it is.
One of the biggest things with the union, though?
That was the, that was the biggest thing we heard at the high school listening session. The other issue that comes with getting out and having longer breaks is hourly staff, almost two weeks in that calendar without pay. And that can be a hardship for support staff. But when you look at the folks who completed the survey, teachers and parents primarily are the ones who identified that they like the longer breaks. So I bring this for this discussion as to how we want to proceed. We have two options in front of us, and that's kind of the data that we have. Does that make sense? Any questions?
So now I would call for it.
Yep. So if anybody wants to make a motion on either of these options.
Let's make emotions on this.
I move to approve option number two for the 2024-2025 academic calendar.
There's a motion in a second to move option two. Discussion.
Option two is the longer break and getting out later in June.
And so that one had the bigger percentage.
That is what more people wanted at 55%, but that creates a couple additional challenges.
I might accept this early.
341. From the survey, I get a pretty good. Although there's only like two questions, which one do you want?
First of all, I want to thank you for snow day clarification as well, because I had asked Steve, I know last year, you know, it was, I think, the day that I asked about that, and so it was too late to talk about adding an additional snow day. I do think this far north, it is, two days isn't probably enough. But if so many feel it's going well, then I'm happy with that. So I'm glad that you shared those surveys.
And they provided good feedback on how we can make it a little bit better. So that was good.
That's good. About the snow days, quick, so how do teachers, like, I know there's probably a lot of barriers for some kids to get their work done on those virtual snow days. So how do the teachers or what guidelines do they have to determine whether that's an absent or present for the students, given all like the truancy goals?
Do you want to comment on that at all?
Just because you're a big part of it. Different at each level, but in general, the guidance that we provide teachers and the like attendance instructions, part of their like directives for that day is that to consider that each family might have different circumstances. Sometimes older siblings are babysitting younger siblings. You know, there's, there's a lot of things that take into consideration for each family that students, depending on the level, have between five to seven days to complete their work. And if they complete their work, that would have been assigned to them, and they did that if they were at school that day, then that would count as a present. Does that make sense?
That totally makes sense. I'm just wondering, like, if they don't get it done at home, do the teachers help them throughout that week? Like, if they go back?
They look a little bit different at each level.
Right.
Whether it's kindergarten or.
So then they're not absent just because they have their older sibling watching them.
Yeah, the attendance guidelines, I think, really take into consideration that we want to make sure that it's equitable depending on what a family circumstances might be, if they're not able to do the work that day.
And I'm glad to hear that clarification as well, because sometimes I was under the impression that it was meeting once on a Google Meet or something with their teacher, that then that would mark them present. And that worried me about internet connections, about time, you know, who's caregiving in that moment. So I'm glad to hear that they have a little bit of leeway there.
And those are the, what I just said are the same attendance guidelines that we had last year.
Okay.
Got good feedback about that, making sure that it is considered of every family's situation. So we'll keep that again for this year.
Is that two-week window in December, January, the same pay period or two different pay periods?
Good question. Molly, do you?
A two-week window on option two, December, January?
They go two, like, do they go two straight weeks without payers at one week and then one week? Is that what you mean?
Oh, is that a full pay period or is that two different pay periods?
They get paid on December 20th. And then on the 3rd. And so it would be split between two. Because the 30th through the 3rd would be paid on January 17th. But they do get the four holidays in there too, just so you know, and those are paid. Then Christmas Eve, Christmas Day, New Year's Eve, and New Year's Day. So it would be four, full two weeks. They get paid for four.
So out of 10, they get paid for four.
I guess I'm really surprised that most want option two because I remember that was like the biggest point with SFT.
Well, only really the high schools.
Same session.
The high school was.
The high school, yeah.
They said, I mean, and remember, you know, all employee groups filled this out, as well as all buildings, obviously, so.
So if in their discussion or I guess argument against option two with those three days into the next week, I guess, what's that look like in the high school? It's gotta be same instruction going on, everything still happening, just without seniors there.
And some classes, I'm assuming some classes are just seniors, and some have a mixture of seniors with other grade levels. So it depends on your course and your department, how that plays out.
I think the biggest challenge that we heard is if you have a course that has seniors and another group of students, the doctrine might just be juniors, you know, it's not necessarily ninth, 12. Then they have, the teachers who teach those courses have to be sure they do a wrap-up of what they're doing and have final summative assessments and all that stuff for their seniors and probably the rest of their students. So it's just more of a.
But I did meet, I did meet with the department chairs after the listening session, and I explained how this all plays out. And I said, really, the biggest factor that determines how many days you're without, are without seniors is how long our winter break is. So that's the determining factor.
Maybe they prefer the longer break even.
Yeah, so, sure, yeah. And it's really interesting because when we first pushed these calendar options out five years ago, people wanted to get out sooner in June. But since COVID, people want longer breaks. It's just an interesting change.
Yeah, I think it's, you know, looking at it, I can sort of see it makes sense. I mean, you're coming back for two days. And then having a weekend again, as far as planning, maybe people are taking vacations, want to go with some of their kids after.
I'd like to start up two days, and then you kind of have to redo the routines already on that next Monday, so that does.
So option two has four days without seniors, and option one is two, both only two days.
Right. And the department, I mean, I felt like the high school staff understood, and they just wanted to be sure they were part of the conversation. So I think they'll be okay with either option, but I did say, you know, I would bring it up here for discussion.
I do want to add to that one of the positives of having the link section so early was that you could take some of the feedback and make some of these changes and things up early enough. So that was good too.
Action, any further discussion? All in favor of option two signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion here. Thank you. Consideration, consideration of overnight field trip request by Caitlin Knoll to Superior Days in Madison, Wisconsin. Aye, Caitlin. Need a motion?
Yep, motion to accept, second.
Motion in the second to accept the field trip request by Caitlin Knoll. Superior Days, Madison, Wisconsin.
Pretty much done this annually, right?
Last year, first year, we've done it since pre-COVID, right?
Yeah. And how many students are you talking about bringing down?
This year, 15.
Okay. And it's what we hear from the Superior Days, people who go down, this is the best part of the Superior Days, is having the kids with them, yeah.
Yeah, so last year, we brought three. This year, we're planning to bring 15, which is, you know, over time, historically, like, there were groups anywhere in that range, really. And so we're, we're excited to have a bigger group. I think the rest of the delegation is excited as well. We're gonna share transportation with the other Dumas County students who are going, so that helps a little bit with our transportation costs. Yeah, we have 15 students who are very, very excited about the opportunity to go.
I want to thank you for the plurality of your report here. There wasn't anything that I questioned at all.
Happy to answer questions if they are.
Any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Consideration of overnight field trip requested by Pete Conley, Superior High School for Chicago, Illinois, from February 28th through March 2024. AP Biology Evolution Field Trip.
Motion to accept.
Second. And the second to accept Mr. Conley's Chicago trip discussion. This is an annual trip, I believe, that Conley has taken. The total of four teachers will be on this trip as well. Discussion, hearing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Now time for the committee agendas. First up is the Teaching and Learning Committee.
All right. Action item one, administration recommends the addition of new courses at Superior High School in the 24-25 school year.
Both approve.
Aye.
And.
instructor.
Okay, so the first part of the action item is about, um, a specific new course. And then changing, um, the credit bearing card of two other courses. So I just wanted to give a little bit of background though, before I talk about those. Um, so newer board members kind of know why we do this. Um, the board is required to approve things that are related to credit bearing courses at our high school. Um, our high school departments, as you can imagine, are always always in the works of planning for the future on their courses. And as I was telling Nick when I met with him to explain this, sometimes ideas for new courses come up and never come to life, but there's always a brainstorming process that goes on kind of year round. Usually when a course, a new course comes up for approval, the department has been thinking about it or working on it for usually up to a year. Um, our high school students register for their courses in the month of February, which means that our course catalog at the high school needs to be available and ready for kids and families to be looking at in January. So if we back the train up another month, that is why we typically ask for approval of any new courses, if there are some in any year during the month of December. Um, the items tonight are specific to our English department. Um, for those of you who were here last year, you probably heard me say this, then our English department has been working really hard for several years now to shift what their classes are like in their department. Um, as with many high schools, uh, in the state of Wisconsin, probably in the country, there's a very traditional way that you could have your high school English courses, probably the kinds of courses we took when we were in high school. We, of course, continue to have a very traditional pathway, which is English Language Arts at the ninth grade level, World Literature at the tenth grade level, American Literature at the eleventh grade and Brit Lit at the twelfth grade level. That's a traditional course set of coursework, which again is available and students take. But what our English department started to talk about, um, five or six years ago is not all of those courses are of interest to all students. And so what could we do to think outside of the box and think about engagement and what our students are really interested in? So they started changing some of their courses. Some new courses have come to be, some changes to current courses have happened. And also sometimes even just changing the names of courses or one or two standards within them changes the interest level a little bit. So I'm going to pause before I talk specifically about the action item tonight and ask, do you have any questions about? What I just said?
Uh, so these new courses are put together by teachers. High schooler?
Yep, by the departments.
So they create the curriculum too?
They create the curriculum. Usually it's a team of people that work together. Often, um, in order to even get to tonight to become a new course, they spend a couple of months making kind of an outline of the course. And, um, the principal and I, so Aaron and I have been sitting with the English department, you know, for several meetings this fall, talking about what specific standards would be taught in that course. We brainstorm what some of the units might be, et cetera. And then the bulk of the curriculum writing happens usually in late spring and then in summer when teachers are not trying to do that and and, uh, teach their courses during the day. Um, so it's a team of people that do it. Um, our department chairs are often heavily involved, usually our shared leadership team members that are from that department are heavily involved, kind of no matter who teaches what course. Um, another thing we always look at when we're thinking about, um, are we even going to bring new courses forward? Is the licensure that's required for specific teachers to teach courses. Um, English is a pretty broad open area, so that's not usually a problem in that department. But if we were talking specifically about a physics course, for example, we would need to be sure that we have people licensed specifically in teaching physics. And that there's like sustainability in that. Um, so we didn't, you know, we're not putting a new course in the catalog that might only be there one year if it's really dependent on if we have a staff member or not. So we definitely take a look at that when thinking about that too. Does that answer your question?
Yep.
Okay.
And my other question is, do you have the ability to allow us to see what the curriculum is before we approve it next week?
I could show you an outline of what's planned, um, because they have to fill out a, a form, kind of an outline form to talk about are there any prerequisites for the courses, what the course description is going to be in the course catalog? Um, and then we mostly focus on talking about what standards are going to be taught in that course. So I could show you, um, all those. Would you just like me to email them?
Well, you can send to me and I can include them in the weekly update.
Yep.
Thanks.
Yep. So
The alignment then with colleges accepting these new type of courses and in comparison to the traditional four. And then, um, is there a check on the NCAA guidelines if we were to have a student go to division three, two or one?
Yep, Wendy Nelson, kind of one of our lead counselors at the high school, always does that part. We really only have one new course that's being introduced for next school year. There's some changes to the, to the others. But Wendy has done that work and checked on that. So we'll be good on that, on the NCAA part. Um, you asked another question.
The, the colleges and stuff, so then the acceptability of
Correct, yep.
Of, uh, advanced mass media and journalism.
Yep.
What, what alignment is that in their acceptance of a student needing four high school or three high school credits in order to?
Four, yep. That's a really good question. Um, something that's interesting about ELA, um, that's a little bit different than our other content areas is that in order, as per state statute, in order for a course to be considered an English course, it just needs to have a balanced set of standards and especially a component of writing composition. So as long as it's an ELA granted for credit, and there's four of them on a student's transcript, colleges aren't, um, giving more weight to a transcript that has British literature, American literature. In fact, um, trends are kind of shifting because that is a very traditional, I'm not going to say outdated model, but it's a model that not, um, a lot of students are always interested in taking. So students definitely want more of a, a well-rounded, um, first load in the English department often instead of just literature-based courses. So that I, we don't expect there to be a problem. Um, and as we've made the shift over the last five years, we haven't gotten any feedback differently than that. That, that's a good question, something we of course need to take into consideration.
Thank you very much.
Yep. Um, I'm just going to explain if it's okay, so you have the bigger picture, what this all is, um, before you do some look at the stuff I'll send you over the next week. So the one new course that we are proposing for next school year is called Advanced Mass Media and Journalism. It's being proposed, proposed as a half-credit course in the English department that students could either take for a core English class or they could also take it as an elective course. That's one of the changes the English department has made is making more of their courses flexible. So students could take it as an elective or a core. Um, two courses, fundamentals of grammar and style and public speaking are both classes that already exist at our high school. And in the past have only been allowed to take for elective credit. But the English department would like to round out all of the standards that are taught within that course to include them from all the reading, writing, speaking, listening and language standards. And have students be able to also take it as a core credit for up to a half credit. And then the second part of this, should I kind of talk about that too? Is that good?
Are we taking this separate?
I, I don't know, I think I, I mean, you can talk about it, but I think they should separately.
Okay, I'll just mention what the second part is. There are three current courses all listed on the left there that the English department is proposing. They have changes to their names. Um, sometimes the name of a course really matters. And, um, we not only want it to represent what's actually being taught in that course, but also be something that's, sounds like something students would be interested in taking, especially on the elective end. So Spartan Spin One, which is a course that's been at our high school for quite some time. We would like to change the name of that course to Intro to Mass Media and Journalism, because it would be the introductory level to the advanced new course that we are proposing. Um, just a little bit about that, um, last school year, we had forty-eight students who were taking Spartan Spin One. This year we have ninety students who register for that course plus eighteen additional students that wanted to take that as an English course. So that course is growing. And if students want to take that class at the tenth or eleventh grade level, which they are able to do, the English department would really like to offer an advanced option, especially for students that want to go into any field that's really related to mass media or journalism. Um, so that's why Spartan Spin One would be changed to have the name match the advanced version. And then Literary Arts from Graphic Novel to Film, the English department would like to change that to Graphic Novel, Film and Radio Drama. And then CITS Public Speech, Speaking, CITS stands for College and the Schools, was a class that already existed, but we no longer articulate our courses with Lake Superior College. So we just need to remove that part so we can still offer the public speaking course. Any questions about that? Okay, then I will send Amy so she can pass on to you, like the, I will pass on to you the forms for the courses that the English department filled out with info about the courses. That's good. Okay, thank you.
Any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Carries? The second part of this is the administration recommends the following course name changes at Superior High School, beginning into twenty-four, twenty-five school year, as Crystal stated. We have a motion to the second discussion. Hearing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. No discussion items, information items, Kate Test Director, continuous improvement and assessment, update on the twenty 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 twenty-three student achievement data and DPI report cards and act twenty Q and A.
And everyone? Uh, Ryan did some nice foreshadowing now that our, uh, data is public, but I am here with our yearly official report on our student achievement from last year and also the ensuing report cards that the state publishes. Um, it always is pretty delayed. Obviously, we're well into twenty-three, twenty-four, uh, but we have some exciting news to share. And it's exciting to be able to do that publicly, not just within our working groups at the building. So um, just a very brief recap, a, a large portion of the work that I do, and I believe you all know this by this point, but is supporting the continuous improvement process, not just the assessment data and not just report cards, but how, uh, teachers and principals and shared leadership teams are looking at data, making sure that it's accessible, building their identifying what their needs are and building continuous improvement plans that they are all very highly functioning uh, teams at doing by this point. So we really start with our strategic plan. I know you've seen this many times, but it is really, I think, the, the visual of student growth being at the center of all of the big components that are at play in a large organization like the school district. I think it is really important that we continue in all of our tough conversations to be focused on student growth and student achievement um, in the work that we do. And the strategic plan is, uh, nearing its completion in twenty twenty-four and uh, it'll be to start over and kind of revamp where we're headed in the next five years. So that's exciting as well. I did include a, um, two, a few links on this page. The doc on the left is just our summary of all of the building's goals this year. It is not new, that was created this fall, but I always like to bring that back out. Uh, all the principals do a really great job of sharing their goals and it's much more meaningful coming from them, uh, but those are all summarized here. And then the links on the, the right are the school profile links that I've shared with you, uh, previously, as well as those two pieces are really important, not only to the goals and the work that's really driving um, the teachers and our staff at each of our buildings, but also those connections with parents in the community and our, our kids, getting our kids um, connected to what they're here and, and what they need from our buildings. Uh, a quick, uh, overview of all of our state assessments, uh, we are in planning for assessment season, which starts, uh, it never really ends actually, but, um, so just familiar, familiarizing yourselves with kind of our state assessment language. The Wisconsin Forward Exam is the largest assessment that we give because it encompasses grades three through eight. Uh, grades ten in just social studies. And then, um, in, that's Language Arts and Math, but also our fourth and eighth graders take science and then our fourth, eighth and tenth graders take a social studies component as well. So we administer the most, uh, Forward Exam assessments in the district of any assessment. The Dynamic Learning Maps, uh, is the alternate assessment, which is typically administered to, um, less than one percent of our district, students with significant cognitive abilities. So that is a very specialized assessment, but it is the replacement and that data is reported within and the, the comparable state assessment. So if you had a fourth grader taking the Dynamic Learning Maps, their data would be included in the Forward Exam Assessment Results. So it is a, the state considers it, uh, a partner assessment. The ACT is our state assessment for all eleventh graders. Um, English, reading, math, science and writing. The writing is optional if kids take the ACT on the weekend, but as the state assessment, it is included in the assessment suite. And our ninth and tenth graders now take the pre-ACT secure. Um, we just, last week I did a correlation between our fifty-five juniors who opted to take the ACT this fall on their own and pay a little bit of money. And then I covered the rest. First time we've done that, uh, it was an amazing correlation. The predicted scores from their tenth grade pre-ACT were within zero to point four points of what they ended up getting on as a, as a group in mass. Some gained more, some lost a few points. Uh, but I would say it was pretty statistically significant, which is helpful in planning for kids. Um, as they work through kind of that ninth to tenth to eleventh grade and, and wanting to use that ACT potentially for scholarships and in college, uh, admissions. There is, uh, there's been since COVID, a lot of discussion around schools taking, not requiring the ACT as part of applications. And I think we're seeing a a, a swing back to what it was pre-COVID where schools are now starting again to require or highly suggest that the ACT is a part of applications where they weren't really for a few years. So um, really my work is trying to get kids as much support as they can to be as prepared as possible uh, with that assessment.
So Kate, can I ask a question with the dynamic learning?
Yes.
It's saying alternatives. So if they take the dynamic learning map, they're not taking the Wisconsin Forward?
Correct. Yep, yep. So their cognitive ability and that's written into their IEP, uh, documentation. So it's very, I think we have a good process now through our collaboration with our special ed department as well.
Thank you.
Yeah, absolutely. Good question. So then at the district and classroom level, we have a variety of assessments and I think Brian said it really well earlier, that the state assessment is great in terms of giving you this really big picture and being able to compare to the state of Wisconsin. But it's not helpful along the way. One, because the assessment happens typically March, April, and we don't get the results back until June, July, sometimes August. Um, it's not very helpful in a planning or, uh, delivery of what we need to change or how we need to support kids in a different way. We don't get an item analysis out of that assessment. Uh, which would say, you know, X number of kids got number fifteen wrong. Here was the question on fifteen, just so you can plan from it. We don't get that information back from the state. So it's a, it's a pretty broad picture. We can look at standards and that's as drilled down as we can get from the assessment for planning purposes. So these assessments that we purchase in-house and utilize in our buildings are much more useful to teachers, principals, um, for that building level data picture. And FastBridge, you've heard it mentioned a number of times, is now used, uh, grades K through eight. Prior to that, we use TS Gold, which is an early childhood, um, assessment at the pre-K level. And then, um, also along the way, common informative assessments in courses are measuring specific standards to the, to the course. So that kind of gives that big achievement data platform. We use a lot of information to plan with our continuous improvement. We're using demographic data, attendance data, behavior data, perception data, um, from surveys and then implementation data on how we're, how we're working through, uh, pieces that we are implementing on our CIP. And principals are really coordinating that work with their shared leadership team. So I think it's important sometimes we never, no one ever wants to be judged on one data point on one day and nor do we ever want to do that to kids. So I think it's really important that we have a big picture. Um, many data points that tell the story. I for sure would want that if someone were telling my story, not to just be judged on one data point on one day. So lots of information and using that to make decisions as we go along.
Can I ask a question? Um, so state testing is obviously mandatory. Um, is that something that the district pays for or is that?
The state pays, uh, well, the state pays for the assessments. Um, not
Not the time.
The work and the time that, uh, my assistants and I put into the coordination, principals, teachers, et cetera.
Sure. Okay.
Yep.
But then FastBridge, those are not required, but those are ones that we've chosen as a district.
We are required.
We pay to.
Correct. Yep, the state does, does some reimbursement, which is actually a little tied to act twenty. So the state requires us to have a reading readiness screener.
Correct.
And because of that requirement, they do some reimbursement in grades four K through three. Four K through two. They're going to expand it to three within act twenty.
three, 4K through two. They're going to expand it to three within Act 20. So beyond that, it is not a requirement, but it is a, I don't know anywhere that doesn't also assess beyond grade three.
Okay. Yep. Yeah, I was just going to ask if there was any correlation with Act 20, then if there were any testing things that we could get rid of, but it doesn't sound like we could really.
So in relation to Act 20, the, the assessment piece of the puzzle is pretty stressful to me as we have now created a K8 picture of data, right? So it's really hard to talk year to year about kids when you're saying, well, in this grade, they take this assessment and then next year's teacher doesn't really know that assessment because they give a different assessment. So it's really nice to have this continuum, which we have now grades K8, which is a pretty long time to be able to say, I understand as an eighth grade teacher what they took in fourth grade because I'm giving the same test, but now we're in eighth grade. So we have this nice continuity of that assessment. As part of Act 20, the state is going to mandate an assessment that has yet to be named and we will be required to use that assessment 4K through grade three. So I really, you know, would I, if they pick FastBridge, they could. If they pick something else, then we'll have to determine if we pick that then to change. We'll have to retrain all the teachers, all the new materials, et cetera. And that implementation date is August of 2024. So like I spent two years mapping all of the FastBridge implementation out and this is stressful. But we'll do whatever we need to do so that our teachers have what they need to do, what they need to do in August and September, but that timeline is a big component of them known right now.
Do you know how common FastBridge is in Wisconsin?
Good question.
It's a really good question. I was just actually at a Midwest, I was working with other leaders around the Midwest that use FastBridge and it, it was developed in Minnesota. So it's very common in Minnesota. It's the probably pervasive in almost every district in Minnesota. And we, I thought we were some of the early adopters in Wisconsin and we are not. So between STAR assessments and FastBridge assessments, those are the main two assessment suites utilized in the state of Wisconsin. They're actually owned by the same company, which is kind of interesting. So through acquisitions. So there are a few other products out there, but those are the primary two assessment tools that are used in the state. So pretty heavily used.
So logically, they pick one of those.
Logically. The email of the Legal and Net DPI, if you'd like to just ask what their plans are. So that, that is a big component that may change some of our assessment concern. I think our EMLSS teachers have, we have such a progress monitoring data warehouse now of all of our kids as they're going through interventions and all of that is our FastBridge data and they have asked, what can you do to make it not change? And so we're doing what we can. I have included, so you could, I could, no one would like this, but I could be up here for hours going through every grade level. So what I've, what I've done historically, and I think it gives us a snapshot, is share fourth, eighth and 11th grade, big picture, district-wide ELA and math data with you so that you can see kind of a continuum. Obviously, we have all of this information drilled down similar to what Ryan did earlier by disability, by socioeconomic status, et cetera. But for today's purpose, I just kind of a snapshot of where we've been, how we compare to the state and then, you know, questions from there. This is going to lead into a little more specifics on the report card. This is the information that then feeds the report card source as Ryan set up earlier. So you can see that we are trending great with our fourth graders making some significant gains in the past two years. So you can see, we are the blue bar graphs. This is our fourth grade, ELA on the left, math on the right. You can see that we've made some pretty significant jumps since 2021 and now are, I would statistically significantly outperforming the state, especially because again, we continue to test 98 to 99% of our kids. The state is testing 92 to 94% of state population. So we, we have tested the vast majority of our students and it's up for debate where that extra 8% of the state's kids, where they would fall, but one could, you know, guess where you split the difference and you would have a pretty different bar graph on state performance. And these are, I should have mentioned, these are students performing proficient or advanced. And you can see in math, we are not yet, we have not yet closed the gap to the state, but we made a nice jump closing that gap over the last two years as well, from that point in 2021, coming back from COVID. Our eighth grade shows our biggest concerns district-wide in terms of our gaps with the state and the decline. And we continue to work extremely hard. Mr. Lebers and I and the whole team at the middle school, shared leadership team, teachers, everyone is working really hard. And so this information, when it comes, is hard to process because it is not a lack of hard work by the staff that we have in our buildings. So we continue to really, we have a pretty significant focus on math district-wide, but especially at the middle level. And we also have a pretty significant focus, I believe, in the building. How are we working with kids to take the test seriously, put in a really good effort? It's hard when you're in eighth grade. This isn't that big of a deal. How do we make it be about their personal growth so that there's a connection here and we're getting the results that we can see in a classroom basis also transferred to our state assessment? So a lot of work. People are working hard and it's not the data we want to see. So we continue to work and, and plan, learn things through our professional development, et cetera.
So
Go ahead, Ed.
Question.
Yep.
So like 2021, 2022? The 2021, 2022 eighth grade would now be a ninth grade class. Correct.
Yep.
And so 2020, 21, that's like a 10th grade. Are you tracking like since like 20 and 21 is so low?
Is that group of kids
In that
Yep. And they are making gains.
In that
We are seeing that grow. The hardest part is the set, the assessments aren't apples to apples because in ninth grade, they start taking the pre-ACT. So now we have like, in general, yes, we, I am tracking it and we do look at that information. It's just always hard to say. They scored basic on the forward exam, which equates to whatever, 16 on the pre-ACT. So we are tracking by cohort as well.
What about from seventh grade last year to this year, is it?
They are making gains. It is, the middle school level is the most difficult level and this is reflected in their report card to, to see the gains. We see gains through elementary school and then we have this low six, seven, eight. We are seeing gains and we are seeing kids make gains, but we're seeing en masse, not what, we're not moving as a group. So I think about math in particular, and it's such a subject that you build on. And so when there is a drop, especially in 2021, how do you make that up? Was there a four piece that was missed? Was it retaught because that was, that was virtual year, right? And so how do we go back, but we have to keep moving forward?
Exactly. Good question. Yeah.
Super good question. And this is not a, this is a national trend that math took a harder hit during the pandemic nationally than reading. So kids lost a little bit with their reading, but were able to gain it back faster. And I think to your point, and as a former math teacher, I mean, skills build. And if you're not doing it repetitively on a daily basis, taking a semester, we also had kind of a interesting schedule when we did have cohorts in the building following the virtual year. Our kids didn't necessarily have math every day all year long because we were in our cohort AB. So we have lots of pieces to overcome. And I do think as you look at math data nationally, obviously the state is still outperforming us, but we are seeing some similar trends at a national level.
In case, this is kind of what you were asking about too. Our teachers or all of us, you know, we always analyze the data and you actually always hope that it just shines at you, the one strand that like, wow, you know, data analysis or statistics or algebraic thinking or measurement, like you're always looking for that one that, oh, wow, then we can really address that or readdress that in the curriculum or do some additional teaching with that. One of the things that's been super challenging at the middle school level the last few years is there's, there's no pattern within the data to kind of give us that clear answer.
Sure.
So it's, it's tied across the board. So
And Crystal can speak more to this too, but the work that we're continuing to do with CISA 12 math consultants, our math teacher, I mean, it is not for lack of learning, trying, talking, implementing best practices, working with kids, connecting with kids at the building too. So I think we're on the right track and we're hoping that the, the pieces putting in, that we're putting into place this year and their CIP plan are going to show up in the data and we can, we can have some celebrations.
Our secondary math teachers are like, that area is the biggest priority to us in terms of professional development and some word coaching in the classroom
Sure.
Right now. So
And you can see, I think this speaks, Ed, to your point too, about as you look at a cohort of kids. So this junior class, going back a couple of years from COVID, now they're, they're at kind of, last year, that group was kind of at the, they were in the midst of COVID pretty significantly before they took the ACT. And I think you can see that we are, again, we stayed pretty stable with our ELA data, which was a celebration and math continues to be that area of focus. So ACT data here, leading into the report cards. Brian gave a, gave a nice overview of the work that they've been doing at Great Lakes. One of the things that's really difficult about the report cards, so the state releases report cards on every, not every, but most schools. Some private schools have the option to opt out. We do not have that luxury of opting out, but I do think we have some things to really celebrate. So it is a chance for us to celebrate. The state gives you a score on four priority areas. Ultimately, those four scores are factored in and averaged to become an overall accountability rating. The goal is five stars. 100 would be the top score in the range. It's not a percent, which is easy to think it would be. And so that significantly exceeds expectations rating of five stars is the goal for all buildings. And we have buildings from meets view to exceeds expectations currently this year. A majority of our buildings made great growth. The hard part about the report card reporting is it's not as simple as it appears. So some schools have target groups, which is a quarter of their report card score. Some schools do not. So now you've already made it extra complicated when you're comparing schools. If I'm a school that has the same scores every year, I can compare my scores, but if another school has a target group, but I don't, now 25% of my score is based on a, on spread out between my achievement and my growth. So it gets really complicated really fast. I would be happy to sit down and show you all the intricacies of this. I don't know that you need that, except to know that it isn't super clear cut in order to compare between schools. I think this is just a nice graphic to celebrate. All of our schools surrounding our district, our district report cards score grew, as did all but two of our buildings this year. So that's a real celebration. We also have four schools now exceeding expectations, which is a huge celebration, including the, the buildings that have in the past and hadn't for a few years. So the principals have been really excited to celebrate this being public. The last piece, I've talked a lot about these things already in our conversation, but I think the work we continue to do is to make sure that the data is available and accessible, helping buildings and teams use it, making sure that we're supporting the information that we need on our kids. Our district-wide actions, really continuing that EMLSS structure, we've talked about that a number of times. It's pretty solidified in 4K through five. We're working right now really hard at the middle school to create a structure there. It gets really challenging when you don't have a specific person like the elementary buildings do and the schedule presents lots of challenges, but I think we've got some great, they've got some great things started. Our credit recovery has really continued to support that graduation goal at the high school. And then we've talked about the math piece. Our focus really is district-wide on our math and our math instruction, especially at the secondary level and our social emotional learning work with our district-wide PBS and our bar program in grade six. So that kind of is the summary of the work we're continuing to do this year. Lots of information, but hopefully a snapshot just into some of the achievement and the school report card scores for you. Happy, if you think of other questions, you can always email me too, as this, you know, settles in your brain and you're thinking about data. Any questions right now that I haven't asked? Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. Up next, Carrie Saunders, Director of Diversity, Equity, Inclusion, DPI five-year school self-evaluation summary and department update.
Do you want us to pull up the report that was submitted to DPI? I mean, it's available. The self-assessment
I think talk about it. It's attached to the board agenda if they have any questions.
Yeah, it's the self-assessment item that is on there is something that districts do every five years. And really we sit down as like a DODL team and we're doing a self-assessment on the status of non-discrimination and equality of educational opportunity. So what the DPI asks us to do is to ensure that we have policies in these areas and that we're being equitable. The team reviewed everything and we didn't have to make any adjustments.
It was due December 31st. So we brought it to your attention and then they extended the timeline until May 31st. Bringing it to your attention because we are overachievers in it. Yeah.
Yeah. Yeah. Finish. And it does require that we look at data. So all of that is included in the report that was submitted to DPI. And they just simply say that you have to do this and make the report available to anyone who would request it. Questions about that? Okay. So I am here tonight to just give a highlight about the diversity, equity and inclusion department in, in the district, which it's a small department that I do work with everyone in this room. And how do I just
Left click.
There you go. Okay, sorry. I want to just give a little oversight of what I do in my role as the Director for Diversity, Equity and Inclusion. I work with a lot of these different parts of student services. And so I provide oversight to all of the areas listed up there. I'm not going to highlight all of those tonight. There's a lot of great things that are happening all over. A lot of what I do is provide support and oversight for the counselors, social workers. This is our SAC group. I have Heidi Siegfried at the high school who helps with that. Bryn Larabee is part of it. Carrie Hennessy, who is our mental health coordinator. And then the, the deans and check and connect mentors also participate in this SAC group, as well as some of the more specialized programs, teachers at the high school. So that's been something new this year and it's been really beneficial to have all of us getting together to work through some of our, our main initiatives that we've been focusing on. So I really wanted to highlight tonight for you, we, we, we know that there's a mental health crisis and a shortage of providers. That's not something that's unique to superior. It's, it's all over the United States. So what we've really been focusing on this school year, and some of it started last year, was making sure that all of our staff are trained in something called QPR. And basically that is a system designed basically to increase the chance of survival, just like CPR. And it stands for question, persuade, refer. It's less than an hour training and it doesn't ask teachers or any staff member to provide like therapy or to make a decision. It just helps anyone identify whether a staff, family member, anyone that they know might need to be referred or need a little extra support. And so it just has a really nice outline for that. And there's other schools there's other school districts that have also been training staff in this area. Um, by the end of the school year, all of our district, all of our schools will have been trained. We've done um coaches, the coaching staff have had many opportunities to have this. Same um with administrators, our school psychs, our nurses. Um, so it's really, really taken off. We've also done work uh with our school district suicide threat protocol and that came as a direct result of something that our mental health um professionals in our buildings asked for because, you know, they can't be the only person that knows the steps that need to be followed if we do have a student who's in crisis. So I have a visual to show you that as well. Um, we also trained key staff to use the suicide severity rating scale. That's called the Columbia. Um, and essentially that is using a universal tool. When we do have kids in a mental health crisis, we're following the same exact protocol. It's a checklist. It's something that a school nurse can do if the counselor is not available. So all of our counselors and all of our uh school nurses are trained in this. And so when we then send the student off, you know, with the parents or the ER, um, that is sent with them and given to the doctor that sees the student and has been something that's really streamlined what we what we do. Um, another really big celebration is um three years ago when I was hired, counselors had really been asking about dialectical behavior training, DBT training. Um, this last school year, we partnered with with Millard Dwan Foundation and they gave financial support for our counselors and social workers to be trained in providing uh DBT skills to our students. Um, that was optional and it was a year-long commitment, but we did have um all of the middle school, high school, and several of our elementary um counselors take that training. Finally, um, this is exciting. We were awarded this um school year $16,000 um for a competitive grant to fund opioid awareness at the high school. So we are in the works right now of putting together some um community events and they'll be open to anyone in the community, but really focused at our high school. So I'll be excited to share that info February and March as well for looking at for that. Um, just to to go into just a little more about the QPR. Um, we do share in our QPR training, the resource that the district has and it's available um for free to anyone who's it and that's our employee assistance program. And we have seen an increase in the usage by staff since promoting that. So that is a support that our staff have for their own um mental health. And so that's that's good news to see that. Um, this is the uh protocol that I was mentioning that we have and that was created in response to our mental health professionals. This is shared with everyone in the district. Um, it's part of our, you know, emergency plan. It's in the subplans. Uh, it's a quick look at this sheet and you have a kid in crisis. Here's here's what you need to do. Um, you know, we don't want kids left alone. We don't want the teacher to send an email hoping, you know, that the counselor sees it because they're busy. They cannot be the only people that are responding to this. So that has been something that we um keep coming back to each year and we make it better and make revisions as needed.
Is that something that we developed as a district or is that?
We had a work group created, uh, social workers and counselors came together. That was before you were here and I was facilitating that group and they requested that.
Yeah. And then from there, we had the suicide um task force, which is where that Columbia screening, QPR, and a lot of that were came. But yes, this has been really helpful. So we want everyone to know what that is and where to find it. Uh, the DBT skills, I just wanted to to talk a little bit about that. Um, DBT teaches mindfulness, interpersonal effectiveness, emotion regulation, and distress tolerance. Um, we have had, and we're one of the, we are the only school district that is working with Amber Wing in that when students need an aftercare group, in the past, they would have to have transportation and someone to take them to these groups in the evening. They don't need that anymore because we're partnering and offering the groups at school. So our staff sits in a virtual group with students who want to be in there that have been in Amber Wing and need to continue practicing the skills. And then Amber Wing therapist provides and runs the group. But we also, you know, have an adult in there who is benefiting really from how the groups are run. Uh, so that's a huge celebration. Started that last year and started up right away at the beginning of the school year. There are uh small group interventions at the middle school and the high school focusing specifically on these skills. Um, there's also universal and small group intervention happening at some of the elementary schools. And again, the middle school's doing even universal DBT skills. Um, and then Four Corners Elementary and Northern Lights have partnered. They have been working together and had time outside of the school year um to work on using the skills to address some of the data that we were seeing in our SABR's screener. So that's a lot of info. Um, okay, so switching into some of the equity audit action steps, the um equity audit showed that we really, really needed to focus on some sort of universal learning for all staff. You know, we have lots of great optional offerings. We also know time is an issue. Um, this year I've been working with the administrative team focusing specifically on microaggression training and then kind of modeling what they can take back to their staff. Also very excited, we will have um implicit bias training for everyone in February at our PD day. We also um, Crystal sent out a survey to all staff about, you know, what they want from professional development and they definitely like the choice sessions. So our theme for choice sessions in February will be um focused all around equity. And so there'll be staff all across the district that will be doing those one-hour sessions. We are in our third year of SEED, um, seeking educational equity through diversity. We have 24 participants in that. And of course, we'll continue with book studies that um have a focus on equity. We had a lot of um participation in that last school year over about last summer. Okay, Black Student Union. Uh, still working with the Black Student Union. We have about 10 students coming on a regular basis. Um, and the club has kind of evolved. They're not so much wanting to teach their peers about Black history. They're wanting to to learn. It's like a mini um mini session. They're really focusing on implicit bias. And so that's what we've been doing. Um, they're also gearing up to have a meeting with Mr. Fezzi like they had last year for a student, um, you know, voice session. And that is a goal that the high school has. So each year, um, over the last few years, Erin has done that with the students and they've really appreciated it. Okay, uh, you've heard me talk a lot about our American Indian education. That's a big part of my job. We have a parent committee meeting that meets monthly. Um, the main focus that the parents have really asked for is to bring cultural um awareness, you know, have some events and then um really look at um college opportunities for our native students. Uh, we've received $3,000 each semester from this American Indian College Fund partnership, which has been great. It's really allowed us to have a couple um very specialized events for our native seniors. Um, something new this year is a student affinity group at the middle school. Um, an affinity group that's a space where students with shared identities or experiences can come together to connect, share, and support one another in a really safe and respectful environment. Um, this year we're focusing on seventh grade. Right now there's four students. We meet weekly. It's a pilot. The kids can come in by referral, um, optional participation, and then there's a lot of ongoing parent communication, which has been um very, very positive. Parents have appreciated this.
Are you the one that's leading this group as well or?
I am. Yeah, yeah, I am.
Are these all after school? Like all the things you've gone through? Are they kind of they're during?
Great question. So the Black Student Union is during club time at the high school and then with the middle school, um, it was just going to be over the lunch hour. The the kids really do like to eat lunch with an adult. Um, they email and ask coming. So that's that's great. Um, they asked if I could come every day. I said, no, we're going to do it once a week. Um, and so we'll do lunch and then either the class before lunch or after lunch so that they're not always missing the same um same class. It has been um impactful. There's been fewer um behavior referrals and it's just been a really good support. So we'll continue to get some feedback on that and um just have that space.
And then, sorry, on the last slide, the SEED, was that was that a student thing? I missed that.
All right, yeah, that is a professional development for staff in the district. And so they commit to a year-long course. We meet once a month.
It's like a graduate course.
Yeah, yeah.
Closed off at 24 participants or can it?
We could take like up to 30. And so we had a couple of people who had to leave at the, you know, right when we were starting up because they had some conflicts. And it's really important that you're able to make that year-long commitment and not just like pop into one or two sessions. So yeah, great, great questions. Okay. Um, I'm really excited. Our students, our native students have really taken some initiative. Um, they wanted to do a table during Native American Heritage Month. So we had all kinds of information for their um peers to look at. We had a trivia game and a lot of kids visited the the table. It was awkward to take pictures of all of it, but I did try to capture a few. Uh, lots of support from the high school in that. And that was over all three lunch periods and we had books and and some prizes. Um, and these are some of our student leaders that you can see here who helped organize that. We had a rock your mocks event where information went out about like what it was or what it is, why it was important. And then uh one of our students, Oh Saltfish, was rocking his mocks that that day. And finally, uh, family engagement, the committee held in a uh native roller skating event the day after Thanksgiving and um there was a nice turnout for that and just a time for people to get to learn a little bit about our program. And then just last week, we actually had six seniors who came to this um learning session to find out about some changes with the FAFSA. Um, there's a lot that they have to do to even start that process of applying for financial aid. So we we've um started that. It's a small group, but they were very appreciative and will be continuing to meet every few weeks to make sure that they're ready along with their parents to fill that information out on December 31st when it comes available. And that is something that the American Indian College Fund um kind of sponsored. So they 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 held the webinar. We, you know, interacted virtually and then they had like food and prizes for attending. Okay, lots of information. Questions? Some during it, but.
Yeah, thank you, Carrie.
Yeah, thank you. Um, if you have anything that comes up, reach out anytime.
That's it for me. Um, Ed, you're not gonna be able to go tonight. Sorry.
Am I wrong?
We don't want to talk about your section.
Thank you, Mr. Schumacher. Next up, Budget Insurance Committee, Mr. Nicholson.
I just have one action item. Administration recommends approval to accept gifts, grants, and bequests received in October of 2023.
Motion to stop.
Second.
Hearing a motion and a second. Is there any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Um, there are no discussion items. Informational items. Update on staff meeting?
So we had our budget sappy's last week. Um,
Two weeks ago.
Two weeks ago.
Yeah.
Um, hopefully you guys were able to watch the video and see what it was about. Um, we've had good, good amount of people that have viewed the video. Um, we sent out a survey. We've gotten a lot of results from that. And one thing I did like from it is a member from the teachers' union sent me an article last week that said, hey, this came out from Wisconsin Public Radio and it had to do with the teacher salary. He said right on there, this is exactly what you've been telling us. You know, we appreciate for us see this ahead of time. So it was uh it was good. I think the biggest thing as we go through this budget is just getting that information out to all the staff so they fully understand where we're coming from so we can all work together to figure out a a solution. So overall, I think it was really good and well received. So.
Thank you. And Fund 10, revenue and expenditure, preliminary reports.
This, can I say something? Since I never say anything about this, so it's all in. But one thing I want you to guys, what do you see is the what causes stress for me every day. If you look at this right here, we got $1 million in revenue that we brought in so far this year and it's to the expense side. We've spent $17 million. It's just the unfortunate way that school finance is built. You get a lot of money at the end of the year. You don't get much money at the beginning of the year. So you just gotta move the money around. You gotta manage your cash flow and make sure everything's all right. Reason I'm in a good mood today is we got $9 million today. So it was good for a little, a little while.
There are different periods of time when we have different amounts of cash flow.
Going down. Now, one thing that even a principal would love to be, like two weeks, we're sending out $1.5 million in salary benefits. Awkward. $1.5 million. So even that $9 million we got is gonna come up really quick just by salary and benefits that we're paying out. That doesn't take into consideration all the bills we're paying at the same time. So now we wait till maybe it's my big tax. So. And you never get it. So.
Thank you.
Thanks, Dave.
Well, that ends my report, Mr. President.
Well, thank you. Next up, Mr. Gallagher with the Office of Rules Committee.
I said it's exciting stuff.
All right. So we have several action items. Each item will need its own motion and second just to throw that out there now. Administration proposes the approval of changes to the following policies based on Neola recommendations in order to be in compliance with state and our federal law updates. So the first one will be the first reading of policy 5113, Open Enrollment Program Inter District.
We approve.
Second.
All right, we got what seconds?
Can I add a little context?
You may discuss this.
Okay. Um, this is a policy that is driven primarily by changes in state law. So this is an important one that we need to adopt. Um, this is the process for people to request to enroll into a different school district and some of the language around what we can and can't do as a school district has changed within there. So that's why you see those changes. This was a Neola recommendation. All of them are Neola recommendations, um, except for the attendance. And when we get to attendance, I'll tell you why I'm making those changes.
All right, anybody have any other discussion on 5113? I hear no discussion. All those in favor saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? It passes. Next one is first reading of policy 5200, attendance.
Order proof. Second.
Motion is second. Any discussion?
So this recommendation comes to you um as a result of some of the work I did in preparation for the Douglas County Truancy Committee work that is required every four years. So a couple of years ago, uh, we wanted to really clarify the procedures around what's excused and unexcused. It was very unclear in our handbook. It was unclear in our policy. We did a lot of work to clarify that and put that in our new uh student family handbook. We liked the language that we worked through a couple of years ago to match what's in our policy. The policy recommendations from Neola very much feel like an attorney and not a practical use. Sorry, Kyle. Um, and not a practical use for parents and principals. Uh, so this is a little bit, some of this is our recommendations like around the language around what's excused and unexcused. And then there's some other Neola recommendations as well, but that's what kind of prompted this change.
So our excused and unexcused absence is determined by each district?
No, there are state guidelines that outline. Uh, could you move up a little bit and I'm sorry, when I say up, I mean the other one. Like I want to show the excuse. I'm sorry, when I say up, I mean the other one. Like I want to show the excuse.
That's what I mean.
Say up, I mean.
Uh, uh, right. Um, so this is all really, uh, covered within the state statute around attendance. And then when it talks about where that second from the, where it says parent and students may request up to 10 days. Those are examples of, all of that came from the state uh, language. How it was organized though, on the previous policies was not very helpful. So we tried to make it more organized. That's why it looks like this.
Uh, my only addition, Abigail, if you scroll up and I mean up. Just go all the way to the top. Um, Governor, the attached by Superior City Orange, say six dash two. Being a county guy and having four cars in the county, do we want to have the county organs in there too? 4.24, 4.25, if you want to throw that in.
It would catch up.
All right. Yes, you can add that.
This one covers all the schools.
Well, we'll add that for next week and then we'll add that also to the, uh, we have the guidelines also on the bottom here. So we wanted the, as you know, the policy's board approval that administrative guidelines are more around our district procedures for how we implement the policy. So we've made the same changes to the, um, administrative guidelines down below. So we would make those also add to, to that as well.
Any other discussion on this one? Hearing no other discussion. All those favors, same five by saying aye. Any opposed? All right, passes. Next one, first reading of new policy 5461, children at risk of not graduating from high school.
Oh, two proof.
Motion seconds. Any discussion?
Is it, it's not intended to mean new children, right?
No.
Okay.
It's intended to mean new policy.
Okay.
Yeah.
Check again.
Uh, any other discussion? Hearing no discussion. All those favors, same five by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Passes. Next one is the first reading of new policy 6108, authorization to make electronic fund transfers.
Do approve. Second.
Motion seconds. Any discussion? Not hearing any discussion. All those in favor, same five by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Passes. Next one is first reading of new policy 6114, cost principles, spending federal funds.
We'll approve.
Second.
Motion second. Any discussion? Not hearing any discussion. All those in favor, same five by saying aye. Any opposed? Passes. Next one is the first reading of new policy 6152.02, waiver of school fees and fines.
Motion to approve.
Motion second. Any discussion? Uh, hearing any?
Where, where does the money come or how do we deal with it when? I guess the, um, the fees are waived, I guess I should say. What fines are waived here? I mean, fines.
I mean, ultimately comes from, we, we pay, I mean, do you want us? Both have things to say. Okay.
Students that we, we're actually obligated to allocate a, a certain percentage or a title one funding to support homeless students. So if a student, um, a fee waived, uh, probably a bad example, like a U book or um, to be in an activity, it's allowable that that could come from title one funds. So that's specific to homeless.
Sure. Good to know.
And then we already plan on waiving fees for youth and free lunch. So it's not going to be a material amount. This is more to support our community and make sure families going through a very tough, tough situation. We don't want to chompe this on something because of, because it can't afford it that.
Good. Okay. Thank you.
Any other discussion on policy? Hearing no other discussion. All those in favor, same five by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Passes. Next one is first reading, policy 7100, facilities planning.
To prove.
Second.
Motion second. Any discussion? Hearing no discussion. All those in favor, same five by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Passes. Last policy, first reading of policy 8310, public records.
To prove.
Motion second. Any discussions? Right. Hearing no discussion. All those in favor, same five by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, passes. There are no discussion items. Two informational items. First one is administrative guideline 5200, uh, around attendance.
Not just to match the policy, just approved.
Anything more you want to say on that?
No.
Okay. And then the next informational item is Doug's County Truancy Committee convened on November 1st, 2023 per Wisconsin State Statute 2018.1162. The group came together for discussion and collaboration. These were their findings and their recommendations, which are all attached. We've covered it a little bit, uh, last month. One of our meetings.
Don't really have much to add besides the sun attachment. So unless anybody has any questions.
Okay.
I picked up on.
We had questions or comments on this? Otherwise, you did touch your own pace. All right. That being said, anybody have any other matters? Please come in. Hearing none. That concludes the policy committee.
Yeah. Your next up Legislative Committee with Diana Smith.
Um, I have no action items, discussion items, and one informational item. Um, Capitol Watch Senate and Assembly took for action on several K to 12 educational focus bills. The Wisconsin Legislature took action this week on a number of bills focused on K-12, K to 12 education. The Senate yesterday voted to approve SB 41 relating to a school psychologist loan program. The bill will now move to Assembly where the Assembly Education Committee already voted to recommend their version of the bill for passage. In the other chamber, the Assembly voted to pass several more K-12 focus bills, including AB 223 relating to maintaining opioid abstinence in schools and AB 575 relating to a DPI mental health training program. The Senate has not taken any previous action on either of these bills. However, according to Senate rules, a committee does not need to approve a bill in full chamber to consider it. In addition to their individual action, both Senate and Assembly voted to pass SB 27 relating to recovery high school gra- program. The bill now moves to the governor's desk for his signature. Click, click more for more information on these bills. Other matters may be brought before the committee. That concludes my report.
Next we have our Operations Committee. There are no action items, no discussion items, one informational item. Pat, take her over.
Okay. Well said. Off we, uh, instituted a new policy through the Transportation Department. Uh, we're not allowing any snow.
Yes.
We have been accepting for weekends and holidays. So we always have white Christmas, but so much good fun. We also had, uh, this year, it was our second annual haunted bus. And, uh, that's a program for, it's all volunteer driven by the drivers. And they actually do all the donations themselves for decorations and they actually volunteer on the buses uh, to, uh, scare the students that they go by. We also have people to, uh, assist in loading and make sure that if anyone gets too scared, they, they scare it off. So we were able to stop at, uh, three locations for schools this year. And then we also did the Supreme, the Superior's spectacular. And I think it went very well. Positive feedback for everyone. And I think it's going to continue to grow as the digital. We also instituted, uh, last week, a new loading process at the middle school. And, uh, it involved our second group of buses that originated at the high school. Uh, what they had been doing was loading behind the middle school in their own individual stalls. And what that caused as we had our students lined up waiting to quickly walk to the buses as they're parked on the asphalt. What we changed up was now we, the, as the buses leave from the high school, they stay with the same order and they drive up right on the, uh, next to the sidewalk. The students don't have as far to travel, uh, so there's no running involved. So it's a lot safer. It also cut down our loading time by, in about half. So, uh, good, it was, uh, suggested by one of our drivers as well. So it's a very good idea. Uh, next is our park stops are going, uh, full swing right now. Uh, so what our park stops are is the idea behind it is to just have a bus that's going to pick up anything that's within a two mile radius for the students that, uh, for the schools. And, uh, the idea is we put our park stops around where the students shouldn't have to walk more than a mile. And that is in conjunction with using DTA. Uh, so right now we have three that, uh, we've been using for Northern Lights and they're, and we see a lot of, a lot of use for that. We have one for the middle school with a little bit of use and one for the high school. So, uh, if we ever, uh, we can't miss two more, we just need to know, uh, anyone that needs it. So. And then finally, uh, our seven new buses that, uh, we did purchase over the summer. They are now all on the road. They all have their cameras. They all have their new GPS module. So they're in use and everything is going well. Go ahead.
Thanks, Pat. Now conclude the Operations Committee report. Personnel negotiations, Brooke.
Great. I have one action item. Administration recommends approval of this 23, new hires and separations report.
Uh, motion to approve.
Okay. Motion second. Is there any discussion?
I told Mr. Friggin, I was going to vote no.
Yeah.
Retirement, uh, people that I've met with district for very, very long time.
Any further discussion?
Well, Erica.
Yeah.
When, end of the school year. She's a very special person and not only the entire district, but well.
Families and.
Yeah. A travel time.
Yeah. It's been a great beginning. Thank you very much. Hearing none. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries. I have no discussion items and no informational items. So that is my, Mr. President.
And tonight's meeting and stuff, minder, next Monday evening, 5 o'clock will be the regular school. Thank you.